She's joining us by phone.
Oh, that's right.
She's in my phone.
Isn't it crazy?
Yeah.
Taking a six holder. Let's call the meeting to order.
You have my roll call.
Yeah, I want to bring myself together. Okay, Judy Nelson.
Here, we're all late.
Tom Poonz.
Here.
Emily Leach.
Here.
Andrew Anderson.
Running late, she will be here.
Eric Cavanagh.
I'm here.
Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free and sovereign republic, for which it stands one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice our. So Judy Nelson is joining us by phone tonight. The only difference being that we have all of our votes by roll call so that we can make sure that she hears how everyone else is voting and we get everything documented properly. Do we have any comments from visitors tonight? Okay, let's move on to the consent calendar. It looks like tonight we have withdrawal, SAU withdrawal committee meeting minutes from August 6th and 28th, as well as our August board meeting minutes and enrollment. Okay, any discussion? We have our roll call open up, please. Judy Nelson.
Yes.
Tom Poonz. Emily Leach.
Yes.
Eric Cavanagh. Okay, next up is the superintendent's update.
Can I make a suggestion that we hear from our student representatives first?
Sure. Thanks for joining us, guys. Nick, do you want to go first?
So over the summer, our former principal, Mr. Paul Powell, retired. So now we have a new principal, Mr. Robert Scully. He was recognized last year as New Hampshire's School Principal of the Year by the New Hampshire Association of School Principals. He spent 19 years at Savvegan High School in New Hampshire. He is a very genuine guy. We had a class meeting. He seems to care a lot about all the students and cares a lot about where we're all going to go and all of our paths, not necessarily to college, but wherever we want to be after high school. And in my media journalism class this year, we're hoping to sit down and interview him so we can kind of get him closer to the student body as he kind of adjusts into the high school. Also, August 27th, we had our freshman orientation, which is a day just for the freshmen to come in and get accustomed to their schedules without any other students there, just so they can kind of get the leg to them. For fall sports, we have cross-country, volleyball, soccer, field hockey, and all that. Coming up, we have Pump Time Week from September 30th to October 4th. That includes spirit week where we have dress-up days. The big Pump Time Football game on that Friday night and the pep rally on the Monday as well. And this year, we also have two new teachers, Madonna Man, who came up from the middle school, she's our new French teacher, and Mrs. Rivers is now our assistant librarian.
Excellent. Thank you. And are you a senior this year?
I am, yes.
Fantastic. So we're also joined tonight by Stella Sorbello, our new Marshwood Middle School rep. Thank you for coming, Stella. Can you tell us a little bit about the beginning school?
Okay, so first off, we got two new teachers. So for French, we have Mrs. Corr. She is a college professor too. But she teaches advanced French. And then we have Mrs. Amato, and she is for field hockey in high school, but she also teaches the counted and the good pass. For fall sports, we have field hockey, cross-country, soccer, football, and boys. Yeah, and then if you're in eighth grade, you can take advanced Spanish, advanced French, or like you could take advanced art. And we got marginalized bathrooms for eighth grade, which is good. Very good.
I saw them last night, they're so much nicer.
Yeah, they really are. Very helpful. Yeah.
Fantastic, thank you so much. It was great to hear from you guys. You're certainly welcome to stay, but also welcome to the take care of homework and whatever else you might have to do tonight.
Can I just make a reminder, the board, our middle school reps will rotate each month, so Stella will rejoin us a couple of times throughout the year, but she has a couple of months off before she comes back. We'll have a different representative each month as she goes throughout the school year.
Fantastic. She's back with us. It's really great to hear it from both of you guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, just to highlight a few things. Off to a great start. All of the staff and people around the building are doing a terrific job at getting our students acclimated and back into the routines of the school year. As you saw on your walkabout before the meeting tonight, some fantastic upgrades to the building and the grounds. So again, thank you very much for the school board, for your cooperation and your support along with that. Just to highlight for the public, a couple of things. We've got some new cameras and visibility throughout the outside of the building, which is very helpful. The kookul on top of the building has been redone and looks fantastic. The front steps, we've got some brand new steps out there now that are, probably will last long after the building and look fantastic and are going to do a great job for us. The tiled floors on the upper level and the lower level in the main building, as well as down in the back hallway. And also the painting of the entrances that were looking a little bit shabby, and those were redone, so they look great as well. And obviously, the gym floor, which looks like a brand-new gym floor now, it's certainly five shades lighter than it used to be, but it looks fantastic. So a lot of wonderful things as far as the facility goes. Just a couple of reminders to the public. On September 18th, the Rollinsford SAU 56 Withdrawal Forum is going to be at 6:30 here at Rollinsford Grade School. And remember, that has only to do with SAU services. It has nothing to do with building, the students, where they're going. That's going to remain the same and untouched at this point. But this is for SAU services only. And then on September 26th, the Summersworth SAU 56 Withdrawal Forum is going to be at 6:00 PM in the City Hall Chamber. So people are invited to both of those upcoming events. And that's all I have for tonight.
Next up is our principals' update.
So I'll highlight a couple of things in the report that I sent to you, and then I've got a couple of brief additions. Under the professional development section, we had a couple of days before school started with students where our staff came back and did a couple of important professional development activities. We have made a decision to do a year-long focus on literacy instructional practices.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you have a little question, call. Maybe you can sit over there.
You can sit up here.
Do you want to put the phone over your ear?
Sit over here. Can you hear me now?
Very well.
That's because you're sitting right under me. So we've made the decision as a staff to do a year-long self-analysis of our literacy instruction, and we've gone outside of our building to have resources come in and lead us and guide us through that process. We have a Title IV grant that was given to us last year in the amount of $10,000. That's how we're paying for the consultant that we're using. And our consultant is through the UNH Writing Project, but leading us through literacy. Her name's Alicia Spates Messier, former classroom teacher from Dover. She's got a lot of knowledge and she has some backup from other professionals that our staff have worked with in the past. So we did sort of an introduction, got our staff to start thinking about literacy and communicating with each other about their own thoughts around literacy. She had the staff write her letter at the end as sort of their exit ticket to talk about, you know, whatever they wanted to. The three hours that she spent with us, anything regarding literacy, what their hopes were for the year, just to get sort of the flavor of our staff and what direction to take us. So we're looking forward to that. She's going to come to four half-professional development days and then six other school days where she can be in the classroom observing and giving feedback, having staff discussions about different resources that we should be using. I think you saw later in my report that we have made a decision to purchase a resource for grades K through 4 to be more consistent with phonics instruction. So we've already started some of the things. Now it's just putting some different practices in place and monitoring. And she's even willing to come in and do some teaching herself and having our teachers watch and to give them an idea of different strategies to use. So it should be fun. And then the second morning, Mrs. O'Connor was able to secure McBrigger EMS from Durham, New Hampshire. They try to get here on a yearly basis to keep our staff fully certified in first aid and CPR. We're split in half, so one year we get first aid training, the next year CPR training, and you know, the next year we flip. So it's a nice thing that all of our staff get that and not just a few people here and there. There are requirements for field trips and special events with students that have CPR certified personnel, so we can definitely cover that. The other professional development thing that's not in there, I'll be taking a group of four teachers and myself to the National Council of Teachers on Mathematics National Convention in a couple of weeks. It's going to be held in Boston this year. We had an opportunity to go to a regional conference last year in Connecticut, but we decided not to, knowing that it was coming to Boston, and instead of it just being regional, it was a national conference. Our math consultant, Tricia Zager, is one of the presenters. So we'll get to, you know, touch base with her again and, you know, not to mention other presenters from around the world. So it was a great opportunity. We selected a kindergarten teacher, a first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, sixth, so we have people spread throughout the building. And on the second page, just to touch base on the Marshwood transition, our new Student Services Director Nancy, our new RDS liaison, Elizabeth and myself, went over and had a meeting with their new Student Services Director, their Special Ed Secretary in their principal prior to school starting. We just wanted to make sure because of new personnel that we all got on the same page, what the procedures were. Good time to introduce each other rather than at our first meeting, first meeting. And the principal was just raving about, you know, how much he appreciated us, you know, reaching out to them and saying this is important for us to do. So I put it under the transition because, you know, that's part of the transition, our special ed kids going over there, so it was a great meeting. And Elizabeth has hit the ground running, and she's had a couple of meetings at the middle school and high school, and contact with Nancy at the SAE for a few kids to.
If I can just jump in for a second, I failed to mention this earlier before, but I wanted to introduce Nancy Micho, our new Director of Student Services. She's been working with us for a while now and hit the ground and running and is doing a fantastic job, but I apologize for not introducing her during my report. So you can put a face with a name now.
Then two other things I just wanted to touch on. Mrs. O'Connor just whispered in my ear that we have 46 students signed up for the clinic this year so far, which equals, just about equals the number we had last year. We still have four weeks before it happens, three, four weeks. So we've got a lot of families really taking advantage of this service. And then open house was Tuesday night. We had a full house as usual. A lot of people appreciative of the physical changes in the building, but also just positive interactions with staff members and, you know, overall a general good feeling about coming back to school this year. Our new staff did in really well. They hit the ground running and, you know, we're supporting them as needed, but they seem to be, you know, on their own as well. But a great start. Questions?
Just had a quick comment about the mess we have. Maybe everybody knows, but please not, there's no Sam and Paul's family on David's here. But there is the run. The run. The run. Sign up. Thank you, Rich. Do you want? What, it's funny? Do it.
Yeah, I'm going to try it. Judy, is that going left?
That's the end of my head.
I don't know.
Okay. I think she is. I might want to check on that. Okay, so next up, we have discussion items, and the first is the Marshwood Tuition Agreement, which Bob emailed to us earlier today for discussion. The redlined version.
I met with John Cavanagh, and we had gone over the suggestions that the Rollinsford Board had and had some suggestions that the Marshwood Board had, and we have tried to put all of those into this redlined version of the draft. So if we could, if you have any suggestions or comments, I'd be glad to take those, but please take some time and look over this and get back to me, and we'll put it on the next agenda as an action item. But there's a lot to look at, and we'll go over it. Take your time, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Yes, this is Judy. I have a number of questions and a couple of comments, but I would like some more time to absorb and to talk about. Very quickly, the term, I'm talking about the length and term, the dates that are in the, this addendum or whatever we're calling it, are the dates that were already created in the original contract with an extra statement about what the dollars were going to be extended or not. And I was under the impression that this, one of the purposes of this addendum was to extend the contract, so probably need to talk about that in the court's nature.
I did check that, I did check that out with our attorney, and the answer that I got back was that we would not be at liberty to extend the contract without putting it out for a warrant because there's a cost associated with that and it would need to be voted on by the public.
All right, that makes sense. And that's a good point. I think we have talked about that specifically, when we want to put that warrant on and want to take care of that sooner than later to get that into this contract or into the next person on the next year or whatever.
Right.
And then as we go forward, I'd like to have, I guess even on this, the date, I think number 14, I guess, the answered marginalization, even on this addendum, I guess. It's a question, that's item 14.
I'm looking for item 14. I would, I would, once this, once we agree on the final draft, what I can do is touch base with our attorney and see if that's necessary. I'm not sure if we're not changing the spirit of the contract or the length of the contract, if the state board would again have to approve this because this contract has already been approved. So I, so after you finish, after the board is comfortable with the final draft, I will bring it to our attorney and have that answered.
Okay, and then for last one, if you think number 19, that's the curriculum alignment and I just like to have a lot of discussion on that. That one is not what I expected to be. Curriculum alignment, three pages, 12, so that's one that I would want to have a lot of discussion. The board, do you have much more to discuss on?
Sure.
Is that something that wasn't in the original contract?
I believe that was not, I believe.
It's not in the original contract and it's also not in the discussions that we had with them last time about the next year.
No, I saw that only the things in red. I thought it were, the changes were highlighted. Is that not the case?
I, I know that those were the strigthrows and the changes. I'd have to look at that.
Oh, I have, I see like a three-page document, I didn't receive the whole.
Oh, ours is 21 pages. I got, I think I, yeah, I got the whole thing in the email.
This one's 21 pages, Judy.
That's funny, I, I never saw that one, so I guess we'll have, I guess I will have a lot more to work on.
Yeah, I've got to look because I believe that everything in red is the changes you wrote.
That's what I was expecting, yeah.
I'll double-check that.
The other, did you talk at all about the exchange student?
That was a, that was a discussion at the meeting that the exchange student, that was a verbal agreement that they would allow that. They would consider a Rollinsford exchange student the same as a Marshwood exchange student, so there would be no tuition charge for that. And they, I think they have a policy that they only, there's deadlines and they accept, I think, two or three a year, so that would fall in that number the same way that they would approve their own exchange students.
So we were denied that a couple of times?
What's that?
We've been denied that a couple of times.
That was the, that was the conversation we had.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not, yeah, I'm just saying, do you feel like we need to put that in a contract since it's been denied to us? I don't know. I don't know that it was discussed before now explicitly.
It was discussed in our, I'm sorry, my turn, it was discussed in our meeting with them, and we was at a budget meeting that night, I know.
Yes.
And they did have some verbal agreements that they would certainly look at that again and again, and were much more willing to look at having someone come in, having one exchange student attend there at, at, at no or little cost to us. And I bet we, Bob made it very clear during those discussions, you know, that no cost is preferable, obviously. But, and I wasn't quite sure if we could come up on that also, sort of in writing, so it would be there for, so we don't have to be backward to this with that.
Judy, can I ask you, you're, you made the statement about the curriculum alignment that you had, wanted to look at that one, please?
Yeah, no, no, I apologize. I guess I am looking at it, I am looking at it, I can't, and I see nothing strung through. So I'm not seeing any of the, I just read my computer, I just have, so I'm not seeing the edits of the document, so I apologize.
Well, it looks like that portion that you were questioning isn't indicated to be an edit, so that's why we're confused about if it's new or not.
Yeah, so that's, that's my mistake. It was from here on along. I, I suppose you have to change it. I apologize.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was in the original.
Okay, so did you have, I guess, did you have concerns about what was written there or?
Uh, no, not inside, I don't.
Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
So, no, my, my concern now is that I really don't know what's there, so I will not make any comments. The actual change document.
So at this point, if the board could, again, take some time and look through the documents, if you have any questions, let me know prior to the next meeting, and I will try to put all of them together so we can have an inclusive discussion, and I'll put it on for action next time.
Great, sounds good. So we can email you.
Yeah.
Okay, looks like next up is the grade six informational forum discussion.
There was a, at the last meeting, we had started the discussion about holding a, setting a date to hold the informational discussion on the sixth grade here at Rollinsford Grade School. So I just put that on for discussion and to see if you wanted to set a date with that forum.
I think it would be good to set a date because originally we were talking about October, which is coming right up. Does it make sense to do it sort of on a weeknight? Yeah.
I think so.
Okay.
What do other people think?
Yeah, great. It's probably better than a Saturday. The 28th.
So are we looking, are we looking at an October date or a September date?
We're going to try to zero in on October.
Yeah, okay. All right. And I will, I will remind the board, this is our second, our second bulleted goal for this year to get this book and form done and get the panel and to sort of keep, keep the book and form what's going on here, so.
Definitely. So we've thrown out Monday, the 28th?
I know it's good for me, because I made a list of the ones that were good for me.
October 28th would give us enough time to, because we had talked about inviting the Marshwood Principal at the middle school, as well as, you know, some other panel members for information to provide to the public. So that would be good stretching it out to the 28th and give people enough time to schedule it.
Do we want to have a couple of dates for Monday?
Well, I'm sure that, I'm speaking for other people now, but I'm sure that if someone is unavailable, there may be another person that could fill in for them. The reason I say that is we could probably pick three dates and somebody's not going to be available to them, so I think, I think that the sooner we set, the more forward the better.
So does that date work for all of us? October 28th? And we say 6:30? 6:30 okay with you? That was the easiest theory.
And here, here in the gym?
Here in the gym. So, yes, thank you to all.
Rich, that doesn't conflict with anything. Here, it won't. Okay, thank you.
That's awesome. Okay, we are up to our financial update. So there's two updates in your package. First one's for your resident, Drew Tharias, where we're We're returning 320, just over $329,000 in expenditures to the town. That's right around where we were basically the whole year due to the special, you know, tuition savings that we have. Along with that, we did end up with $51,000 in unanticipated revenue. Even though we didn't receive all the Medicaid we received, we still had other areas that we had more. These figures are un-audited, they're not coming until November, the week of November 18th. So I don't anticipate many changes, but you never know, so if there are any, I will let you know. As we get closer to tax rate setting, you will have the opportunity again, like you do every year, to set aside that two and a half percent of the front, for the front balance for the emergencies. So that will come, you know, as we get closer to tax rate setting. Excellent. Any questions on this one?
Oh, thank you, Katie. I just wanted to remind the board you that, that basically that, every $29,000, what Kate said in terms of the town, it is, it's really all handled by, um, Department of Health, right?
Yes, yeah, through the tax, yeah, through the tax rate setting it will be, yes.
Yeah, so they take care of all of that, that's, and also we keep our banking, you know, with the plan, it's, it's kind of this time, the, the payment rate of the, to have the tuition, that, that would be adjusted definitely too, I believe, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, yeah, so with it, if, if I down that commission, that's, is it connected to what it does to those, to those numbers?
And then the second update is for this current year, 1920. It's really, it's really early to, you know, have an idea of where we stand. We're still encumbering payroll and purchase orders for the year. I anticipate that next month we'll have a better understanding of where we're at. Just, you know, preliminarily, I, you know, Rich and I had talked and we are going to have some savings in salaries, some maintenance items that, you know, we had done at the end of last year, so a little free up for this year. And then I did get an estimate from Marshwood. I haven't gotten the first invoice yet, but the, um, the enrollment has dropped there. There's some students that have left since we budgeted, so I'm anticipating some savings there as well. But I hesitated to say that until I receive the first, the first invoice, so hopefully by the next month's report, those will be in and encumbered and everything. And then I know Bob updated you last month on the revenue, but we are going to see a shortfall for the special education aid. We had no students qualify. So that will also get adjusted during tax rate setting. They just automatically do that, so. We may have other areas where we might have more, so it could offset each other, but I just wanted to remind the board of that. And like Judy said, the payment schedule was attached to the town. That's just an estimate until the tax rate's set and then I'll adjust it once that's done. Any questions on that one?
Thank you, Katie.
So we're up to new business, which...
Uh, I have, I have one question of Katie, I, I, if, if section, the role that what I tried to say is, can roll the numbers, that we still have one, that's on the top of the two, and I just wanted to make sure that that was actually accurate. I, I, I was not anticipating that, so this will be geared with this year.
Yeah, if you remember when we budgeted, we do have still one student, it's not, they're not there full time, they're still there a portion of the time. But we consider it as one because it is one student, even though they aren't there full time.
Yeah, if you can just tell Daniel and Katie off of the, right, I can just, I can question, um, anything we think is important, maybe, did you still have to do, thank you?
Yes. Okay, so we have several new policies for first reading this time. Did anyone see anything of concern or have any comments about those, the first reading list of policies?
I have some record retention question slash correction. It's great that we have this and I like seeing that there's a schedule attached to it as well. After looking at the secured, new security cameras outside, I think that we need to include something about how long we retain the video footage from those. I don't know what the kind of best practice is for that, but there's nothing about, about that in the retention records or in the schedule, so I'd like us to add something about that.
That's a good point.
And then in the record detention schedule, just a correction, HIPAA is two A's, one P.
I ruled that down too.
It's not a hippo. That's what I was going to say, that's a big privacy joke right there.
Yep.
So.
It's wrong, it's wrong in a few places.
Yeah.
This was a required one, correct?
Yes.
I think so. Yes.
And so, and so, is that something, I asked her a bit about that, I can't see, is that something that, that, that Bob can look into for us or is that something we should try to make a change to?
Look into the...
Video retention?
Yeah, I'll look into that. I'll look into that. My first thought is, I'm, I'm thinking, does that go into your record retention or does it go into, there's, there's a policy on videotaping on, on surveillance? So I'll, I'll check into that and find out where it should go.
Great. Anything else? Go ahead, Judy.
Yeah, I have a question on the, uh, health policy, Judy, I was, and I just wondered, Bob, if you can do any background, because it looks like it's a brand new policy, is this, if you can do some background on what you, on you, why that might apply, I, I actually think it's a great idea, but, so, but it looks brand new and so, when we adopted, even if we adopted, um, it's like, when does it all start? When, when does it start?
Yeah. Well, I'll start off and then I'm going to hand it off to Katie because she's got more information as well. Part of this came from the food service audit. We had a food service audit in Summersworth and there were a number of things that were highlighted, one being the wellness policy and some of the things in it that were mandated. So we, we carried those over and you have more information than that?
Yeah, I think you had a wellness policy, but this one was all redone because there's a checklist that the food service at the state provides to us and our policy did not meet all the requirements of that checklist. So there was a website that they gave us, a food alliance or, I can't remember the exact website, that for schools to follow a sample policy. So that's what we took and kind of made it our own, but this meets all the requirements of that checklist to pass the food service audit. And it was an audit for both districts. They just happened to pick one school in the district to visit, it happened to be in Summersworth this year, but they come every three years to do it, so.
Okay, and, and I know it's been reviewed by the New Hampshire Department of Education, how about, um, um, the, the New Hampshire School Board Association?
I believe they have a different policy and when I sent it to the food service people, it did not meet the checklist that the state of New Hampshire requires.
Okay, so now, like, something that we should, maybe, um, that, that, that maybe we should let the, the School Board Association know that, um, that it's a better policy or something?
Yeah, and theirs did not meet all the requirements, so.
Okay. And so my, my last question, so, so, what we have the, like, form that they're, they're , I know there's a, this one committee can have to be formed in a couple of days, or whatever.
Yep.
So I just, does that have to get, does this get adopted, does that, does the committee get more contracts, things?
Yeah, I would assume so.
Okay, right. I think, I think it was very thorough, it was very thorough.
Okay, any more comments on the policies for first reading? Do we need to make a motion with that tonight or?
Um, just, just to make a motion to move those to secondary.
Make a motion to move these to secondary.
Second.
Judy Nelson?
Yeah, I...
Tom Coons?
Yes.
Emily Leach?
Yes.
Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
Erica Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we have two policies that were our second reading tonight. Is there any discussion about those? It was about the administration of federal grant funds and the food service meal payment charging policy. I do, that we adopt the policies, that's it. Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coons?
Yes.
Emily Leach?
Yes.
Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
Erin Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay, and our last item in our new business is to accept a resignation.
In your packet, you've got the letter of resignation from Amanda Russell.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Amanda Russell, effective on, on the date that she there affected.
Accept. Any discussion? Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coons?
Yes.
Emily Leach?
Yes.
Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
Erin Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Doctor, could this be a time for me to make that, the review I talked about?
Yes, we're, we're in the process of moving forward with interviewing and hopefully hiring a, a, a person to come in. Because of the time-sensitive nature, you, you don't have a, another meeting until October and I'd hate to make another person wait until October and our students wait, so I'm requesting to allow me, the authority, to hire this person prior to your meeting if we should have the right person.
Make a motion. Sounds like a good idea. I make a motion that we allow.
And that we said that we get to represent in the board and to hire them?
Yes.
Do we need to send the right person?
Thank you, Judy.
Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coons?
Yes.
Emily Leach?
Yes.
Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
And Erin Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Great, so moving on to old business, we have our SAU withdrawal committee update. The most exciting thing is that next Wednesday, we have our committee forum here in Rollinsburg, which we talked about a little bit already, where the committee is going to talk about our findings and all of the research that we did and the information that the SAU office brought to us and sort of get comments and questions from the public before we move forward to make a final recommendation. Is there anything?
Just that the, the committee has been very diligent about looking at all options, everything from doing a, your own standalone SAU to, they, we have sent out RRFI's request for information to all surrounding SAUs to see about contracted services and looked at a number of different options with the School Board Association as well. So it's been kind of an all-inclusive search on, on what the best decision would be and all of that information will be brought forward at the forum.
Thank you.
Could somebody from the committee reach out to me on setup for that evening? I'm assuming it's going to be facing that way, but just, you know, what the needs will be, SMARTboard?
Yeah, I'll touch base with you on that, Rich, because on Monday, the committee's having a kind of drive run here and we'll be in touch. Basically what it'll be is set up much the same as the budget hearing with, with chairs facing the stage and then we're going to have, we're going to need, I think we did the SMARTboard with a hookup for a computer and that's about what we're going to need for, for Monday at night.
Guys, can I, who the moderators are going to be?
Yes, Caroline and Kendall volunteered very graciously to, to facilitate for us just to kind of keep the conversation moving and focused in the right direction. So it should be a good discussion. Let's see, we are up to section nine, action items? Do we have the action items?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Future meeting dates, I think we covered most of these. There is an SAU board meeting on Monday, I cannot make that one. And then we have our usual board meeting scheduled for the next few months. What about you, Judy?
I'll be glad, um, but, but to be clear on the school events, there's no standard called Fun Day, but there is, is there is the race that this year, everything?
Yes, there's no Fun Day this year, but there is the 5K.
The Fun Race, and out here it's called Fun Race, so I like that.
Well, Tom's running, so it's going to be super fun. It's all fun.
All right, good. Looking forward to next Wednesday, and so.
Definitely.
And for that withdrawal, you're getting outside.
Okay, I think that's it for tonight. Do we have any comments from visitors?
Yes. Julia Leal, for 26 Rockland Street. I'm wondering if you budget money this year and going forward for legal fees that involve the contract renewal? And is it included in your budget?
The Marshwood contract?
Yeah.
Legal fees are included in, in that budget, yes. Okay.
And what the board, just to be clear, what the board is talking about is not a contract renewal. It, it's cleaning up some language it needs. This, this contract, this tuition contract has already been approved by the voters and it's already in place. This is just cleaning up some language that was old language and it just makes it a neater contract, but it's not a contract renewal.
So when is the contract renewal due?
2025, I think.
Yeah.
That right, 2025, I believe is the, is the date.
So is the legal fees going to be approved year to year or is it just when you're reviewing your contract?
Legal fees are, there's a legal line in the budget every single year, so that's, that's adjusted for it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Closing comments by board members? One ones? Judy?
I know, Erin, Erin, you did a wonderful job, thank you for, um, for, thank you.
Oh, thank, thank you for joining us, we went home. Okay, we will take a motion to adjourn and we have a quick non-meeting to discuss negotiations afterward.
Judy? Judy Nelson?
Yes.
Tom Coons?
Yes.
Emily Leach?
Yes.
Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
Erin Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Is everyone's coming?